Good evening and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 12th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again. I'd like to take a moment to read our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And now I'm gonna go backwards and ask Natty to read the role.
Well done.
Thank you.
Palmer, here. Mueller, Asamara, here. Severson, here. Lewis, here. Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. And I think we're back on track. Next up is Highlander Highlights. The board will honor Columbia Heights High School for being one of the U.S. News and World Report's top schools of 2017. I'm just gonna read a little blurb here. U.S. News and World Report has selected Columbia Heights High School to its 2017 Best High School Rankings. The school awarded a Silver Medal, which was high-performing schools based on lower college readiness, was one of 6,041 public schools nationwide to be selected. Only 10.3 percent of all schools selected were awarded the Silver Medal. Columbia Heights was ranked 55th in Minnesota of 769 high schools in Minnesota. 58 were selected to the U.S. News World Report as Gold. Silver, there were 48, and Bronze, 103 medals for that one. The things that they looked at, just so people understand what the criteria is, for students that performed better than expected in their state, the publication reviews, readings and math, reading and math results on each state's proficiency test, the MCAs, and then factors in percentage of economically disadvantaged students. Another one is disadvantaged students perform better than state average. The publication compares each student's math and reading proficiency rates for disadvantaged students with the statewide results for these student groups, and then selected schools were, that, the selected schools were performing better than their state averages. Student graduation rate meets or exceeds a national standard. The publication only includes schools with a graduation rate of 75 percent, above 75 percent. Columbia Heights Schools' graduation rate was 83 percent. And then students are prepared for college-level coursework. The publication calculates a college readiness index, which is based on the school's AP participation rate and how well the students did on these tests. Columbia Heights High School College Readiness Index was 21.4. Columbia Heights Public Schools is selected as the 2016 Advanced Placement Small District of the Year, and the high school was also selected by the College Board to the 2016 AP Honor Roll. And what I'd like to do is, there was a plaque that was presented, and I'd like to ask Principal Roblesky to come up, and we'll present that to you and recognize you formally.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly, thank you on behalf of the high school staff and students. I think when we talk about raising and developing children, it takes a village. And I want to thank, this award is really an award not only to our community, to the school board, to our staff and students, but with, without the dedication to programs like Avid, to be able to offer the numerous AP offerings that we have at the high school, and the support that the board has given for us to offer those classes, and the opportunity for us to change our culture and climate of our building with our staff and students, has, you know, allowed us to have this award. So, without the support of the community, without the funding for the programs that we have at the high school, the AP courses, and the ability for our teachers to go in and work with our students and have that collaboration together, we wouldn't be able to have this award. So on behalf of the high school and everybody, we want to thank Columbia Heights community, you as a school board, and Superintendent Kathy Kelly, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, next up would be the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondents. So, first up would be the approval of the agenda, and I'll look for a motion to move that forward, please.
It's moved.
Second.
Molly, and Molly, motion. Natty, second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements are as follows. September 19th, at 5:00 p.m., there'll be a school board listening session in the Family Center. Also, September 19th, at 5:30, it'll be a school board work session. September 26th, at 7:00 p.m., there'll be a regular school board meeting. October 10th, at 5:00 p.m., there'll be a Subcommittee on Policy meeting. And then also on October 10th, at 7:00 p.m., be a regular school board meeting here in the Community Room. Next up is Correspondent Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is Communication to the Board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Does anyone here that wishes to speak? Okay, the rest of you guys get to speak later. Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes of the August 8th and 22nd School Board Meetings, and the August 15th Work Session, the Personnel Report, and the Treasures Report for June of 2017. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
It's moved.
Let me give that one to Holly.
Second.
Laura gets the second one. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is Discussion Reports and Information Items. Board members will report on activities since the last regularly scheduled school board meeting. Laura, you want to go first?
Sure, I was just reviewing my, I attended the 916 Board Meeting. Again, that is a, 916 is a collaboration between 14 school districts, and, and it's, it has a separate board and a superintendent. And one of the things that we do in collaboration is, is provide services that, that smaller districts may not be able to, to provide for students perhaps with low incidents or high needs. It's a, it's a great way of being able to provide the proper services, services for them, and it's a lot more cost-effective when we collaborate, so that, it's, that's wonderful. So anyway, I did attend the meeting on the 6th, and it was a fairly short meeting. The only thing I think of, of particular interest was we, we had quite a lively discussion about how we work with contracts, because we have a lot of new board members onboard, and we've kind of always done things one way, so we had some discussion about whether or not that would be the way going forward. So, I can fulfill, you know, when we go into our next meeting, we're gonna have more discussion on that, but that's pretty much it.
Yeah, thank you. Holly?
Let's see. So, I attended the Scaling the Heights Induction Program, and it was wonderful to see all the new staff. I really enjoyed that part. And then the district convocation, that was a lot of fun. It always is. And then I attended the open house at the high school, and then the policy Subcommittee meeting today.
Okay, thank you. Natty?
I was just gonna go, so thanks for the segue there. I also was at the high school open house, thanks for your help. Made it to convocation as well, which is a blast. It's exciting to see all the teachers and recognize years of service and get all pepped up for the year. Also attended the picnic following, which was a great casual time to meet people and talk with people I haven't seen in a while on the staff in the district. Went to the policy meeting right before this meeting. I've also been able to take in a couple of football games and a few tennis matches, so it's been an exciting sports start.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, I also attended the Scaling the Heights and met some of the new staff, or most of the new staff, which was lovely, a lot of good energy. I hope they're looking forward to working here. And also attended convocation and the picnic afterwards. We had lovely weather again, which was nice. It was a nice afternoon to be out there with everyone. Attended open houses at Highland, Columbia Academy, and the high school, and they were all really well organized, I would say again, so a lot of parents, I think, the attendance was really good, too. Also attended a couple of varsity football games, Columbia Academy football game, and had many conversations with parents and staff and community members, and that's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, I met with Superintendent Kelly. Thank you.
That's important, too.
Yes, very important.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, yes.
I also was at the, what I called the New Employee Breakfast, and had the privilege and opportunity to ride on the bus with the new employees. I'm not sure that staff considers that a good thing, but I had fun, and I think as new employees, we had a good time, so had an opportunity to get to know some people a little bit better and make sure that they knew all the very important places in the community that I'm sure that they'll seek out at some point or another. Also attended the convocation, as always, it is, it's amazing. We see our superintendent in a form that is not normally what we're used to, so it always puts a smile on our face. And then the picnic afterwards, again, it was a beautiful day, worked out good, so got a chance to, to visit with people. Attended the open house here at the high school, attended the policy meeting prior to this, and a chair meeting, and I didn't want to just take, just a moment if I could. We have, two of our employees have just recently unexpectedly passed away, and I would like to take a moment of silence. It was Tim Larson, who was District Technical and Building Support Specialist, and Dave Larson, who was our District American Indian Education Check and Connect Mentor. So if we could, just take a moment to remember them. Next up would be the Superintendent's Report. I presume you have one?
Yes, Mr. Chair and members, I have a brief report.
Okay.
We've all mentioned and highlighted that since last we met, we did have Scaling the Heights Induction Program. We had the Welcome Back Convocation and Picnic, we had the Return of Students and Staff, and they all occurred with a lot of help from a lot of people in this room and beyond, and I'd just like to extend a special thanks to everyone that makes that opening of the school year possible. Lots of good memories every year. The district recognized at our convocation more than 80 employees with over 650 years of service of the Columbia Heights Public School District, and I think that's, that's something to be mentioned again. I'd also like to mention, although I don't want to embarrass her, that Director Kristin Stunkel was recognized as the Superintendent's 2017 Above and Beyond Award winner, and we're really happy to be honoring her this year. So again, congratulations, Kristin Stunkel, who's hiding behind the TV? I did have a collaborative partnership meeting with the Executive Director of the Equity Alliance, formerly known as EMI, they have some things going on, and some of the things we are doing with them include classroom partnerships, but they have some special classes going on, and so she wanted to reconnect with us on that. Director Brian Hannikins and I attended the TIES Special Joint Powers Board Meeting, and that was last Friday. And at this point, there are 12 districts that are indicating withdrawal by the end of July 30th, 2017. And so I think some of the people at the meeting were surprised that so many were already, had issued letters of withdrawal. And so there's some resolutions and things that we will bring forward to the board so that we can keep you current on what is going on there, so I won't bother with it within my report, but it will be at a future meeting. I also wanted to let you know that we continue to be working with local 710 in negotiations. We met yesterday, we'll be meeting again tomorrow, and we hope to have something to you in a special call meeting by the end of the month or early October. So, I want to thank everybody that has met with me and been in meetings with me, and thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be the introduction of our incoming K-12 Activities Director, Antoine.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. I'm really excited tonight to introduce our new Activities Director for our school district. Have worked with Mr. Harris for the last month, and I'm really excited to see the work that he has done and he will continue to do, so without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Antoine Harris.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for having me here tonight. It's an honor to be here. I only got five minutes, I was told, so I gotta keep it short. You know, I wanted to give a little bit of background of me and who I am, and so I felt this was an opportunity to do such. I've been in education for 20-plus years. I had an opportunity over the last 10 years to be in an administration. In Burnsville for four years as a principal at Performing Arts High School in Golden Valley, Purpatch, and another year also in Minneapolis Middle School as a principal. So I've been, I've had a gamut of help to be around. So this is an opportunity for me to come here and share my wealth of knowledge with Dan and the high school, in a different role, of course. But when I got here, I had an opportunity to get to know everyone, and the first thing I figured out was how close-knit group this was, and how, it was a family atmosphere. I was told before I got to the district that it was a real small-town community atmosphere, and I'm, I'm from a big city, so I said, what does, what does that look like? I'm not sure about that. And it took me a few days to figure that out, because everyone was so close and so warm and so appreciative to have me here. Everyone's been so helpful, everyone in this room have been extremely helpful for me to be successful, so I am honored to be here. A little bit about my job, I am responsible for athletics and activities. The one piece that I'm, I'm excited to see is the bond referendum, because for me, you know, performing arts is very, very important. I'm a combination of athletics and performing arts, I'm kind of a hybrid a little bit. You don't get that a whole lot. But for me, I'm excited to see that, so hopefully we can do some, some different things within the high school and with the other schools within the district. I also want to make sure I invite you all to the homecoming football game, so please, I want to see everyone there at the homecoming football game on October 13th. It will be a blast. So, that's a little bit about me, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Antoine before we let him off the hot seat?
Thank you for coming. I'm welcome.
You're welcome.
Welcome to Columbia Heights.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up will be the opening of School Building Updates. Just line all them chairs up, or how are we gonna do this?
We have enough chairs. Here they come. I'm just moving microphones back there. Where's the little red one? Oh, there it is.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, we are pleased to be here, all of the principals and myself representing our early childhood programs to let you know how it's going the first week in. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. And with the start of the school year, we really are addressing and embracing and all of our core values and helping to infuse that in our students' experiences. We'll start with our youngest scholars. With our early childhood program, we have our Early Childhood Family Education Program. This week was the first week of our ECFE classes, and I'll just remind you that that's with parents and children. And then out in the Blooming Heights School Garden, Mini Adventures is having a good time out there learning about plants and tasting different produce. Our pre-K 3 at the Family Center, in this picture, you'll see a little girl whose task today was to learn how to use scissors. So, there she is figuring that out. We have the pre-K 3 here at the Family Center. This year, the, a new thing is that we have a three-day option in addition to the two-day option for families. Pre-K 4, this is the first year that we've had the full-day pre-K 4 at Highland. We continue to have that at Valley View and continue with the half-day programs at the three elementaries.
All right, at Highland, I'm gonna start off with how Highland students and staff promote a college and career-growing atmosphere. We're continuing our expansion of AVID this year. We'll now be working in grades 3 through 5 and the leap class, extending our AVID learning down into 3rd grade. We also do career studies in many of our grades, starting in kindergarten. Students are talking about what they want to be when they grow up. We do a large All About Me writing project in 1st grade that has a definite career path in it. Also, it's a focus of the teachers to really promote a college and career-going atmosphere. We wear college gear on Fridays and/or Highland Spirit, or Columbia Heights Spirit gear. And also, we, we really try to promote a college atmosphere in the classrooms with display of lots of pennants and assigning table names to different colleges and universities in Minnesota and out, which you already heard from Kristin, but I have a few pictures of our new full-day pre-K classroom has been added to Highland. It's full, of course, we're 100% full at Highland, serving 60 pre-K students between our full-day and half-day program. Some highlights from the first week and a half of school. Our open house was very well attended, it was packed all night. We had, we can get a pretty good guesstimate of how many people attended, because we do have information on every table spot and desk, so we can tell by how many are left over. We had over 350 students attend open house. Currently, we're act, our enrollment of students coming to school is over 525. Today, it was 529 students. Each day, we seem to be getting a few more returning back to school. Our next big event this school year is our Highland Information Night and Family Picnic. That's coming up on Friday, September 29th. This is the second year that we're doing kind of a combination between a family picnic and a curriculum night. And then another big highlight for Highland this year is we started the recycling program that was first begun over at North Park, and it's been a huge undertaking. We recycled this summer during summer school, so all of the Highland summer school attendees learned how to recycle during summer school to be kind of our spotlight students, but it has been a lot of work. We're saving a lot of space in our trash, which is amazing, but it has taken quite a bit of labor to keep the garbages manned during breakfast and lunch.
In North Park, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Chair Larkin. I'm gonna share just a few things that are new at North Park this year. While Superintendent, Principal DeWitt mentioned, you know, that, that the composting and recycling is kind of an older thing, well, we're tagging on to a few of the things that Highland and Valley View have pioneered. We started AVID last year in 5th grade, and this year we expanded it two grades to both 3rd and 4th grades. I mean, we're pretty thrilled with how seamlessly it fits into learning studios and our philosophy of education for intermediate kids. Our 3rd and 4th grade students are just, you know, beginning to figure out exactly what these big, huge binders are for and, and what it means to actually bring a planner home and get signed every night and so on, so it's just, we're taking the baby steps in the beginning now, but we're certain that they're gonna blast off soon and be where our 5th graders are. And we also started a Spanish program this year. So kindergarten and 1st grade, Mr. Nathan Berdick came to us from Brooklyn Center and has been teaching Spanish to kindergarten and 1st graders, actually since the first day of school. So they're working hard on their colors and their numbers and all of those very beginning things. And then also, something that isn't so new at North Park, but we had a bumper crop this year, is, is our garden. We have a, kind of our own little mini Blooming Heights in the courtyard at North Park. Each grade level's responsible for a garden bed. In addition, our setting 3 programs have their own garden beds, as does our pre-K program. And this summer, like all other summers, we have parents that come in weekly to help maintain the garden. And this year, actually, the crop is, is actually enormous, and each class has already been out to do some work in the first week of school. Maya Lemon, our garden specialist, has actually presented to every class, so it's really become a big part of what it is that we do. And then one extra added thing that is really, is another focus of how important being green and, and good stewards of our earth are. North Park is, starting Saturday, we're going to have solar panels that are gonna be installed on our roof and are actually gonna be connected to, to our main electrical source. It's a small start, but we're hoping that it is just a start. Thanks.
Chairman Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I can honestly say that this was the best opening of Valley View I've ever had. We, we really wanted to focus on rigor, relevance, and relationships, and focus on the relationships between our staff and community members, parents, and students. And without the relationships, we believe that if we can capture their hearts, we'll get their minds, and so that's really what our focus is, also being new to Valley View. And then in order to, you can't just love someone to, to perform better academically, so we have to implement PLCs, which are gonna be weekly meetings as a professional learning community that we're gonna focus on student achievement and practices that we're doing in the classroom, and we started those today. And then also connecting school to the community. At open house, we had several organizations in the community come, we opened our doors up and they were present there, and it was nice to see Board Member Mueller come to our, our PTO meeting earlier this week and even got her to do the Valley View chant once, right? And so those are our main focuses the first days of school. The neighborhood walks that we did, the, the first teachers' first day back, what we did is we had a scavenger hunt, and the team could win door prizes, and of course, everyone's competitive, and we had a lot of things going on, and, and our teachers got in the homes and the kids had a great time, and, and the parents responded really well. And I think it really set the tone the first day, because they weren't getting to know their kids that very first day, and so that open house is like, hey, how's your brother doing? How's the dog doing? And so we, we had some rapport after that first contact. And then those that weren't home, we left notes on the door, and they were bringing those to open house saying, hey, my teacher wrote me a note, so that was, that was neat for us to see. And we're bringing the AVID strategies down to the kinder 1st and 2nd grade levels, so we are getting them binders and organizers and trying to, to grow that, not as a, as a standalone AVID thing, but this is how we do academics in our school day. And then lastly, the playground has been amazing. During the summer, we used that as a focal point for meeting the principal event, we also had some other get-togethers with the kids, and there's just a lot of pride having that structure on our campus, and I know that everyone is, is very joyful when they go out there. In fact, we don't have footballs and soccer balls, everyone is going out there, so that also helps out with the discipline, so I'm thankful for the playground. And that was, that was our first days of school.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, we also had a great start, a very, very busy open house, lots and lots of people, and a good first few days of school. We have had some key messages, that we're trying to make sure our kids hear, our parents hear, our staff hears, and we've talked a lot about those, but the first one really is that mindset, that you can get smarter, and so that, we believe in you, so it's really been a key message, sort of that step one. And then the second one that re-rised up the CA way is our message on a daily basis that we have high expectations, high expectations for what kids do when they're in school, how they behave, what they learn, how they learn, so we've stressed that again this year. We read and write every day in class, and we also talk about reading and writing in all, all areas of our school, whether you're in PE class, or you're in math class, or you're in English class, you're going to read and write. And then that last one, where we've really tried to talk this year at the start of school about, that we lead to learn, and we do that by learning to lead, and so really talking about leadership with our students as well. So, with our staff, we've talked about three big things that we are doing. First of all, collaboration is, we believe, key, we're smarter and better when we work together. So, our collaboration this year is going to be enhanced. So our collaboration this year is going to be enhanced, we believe, through implementing common prep time. This means that all of our math teachers, all of our English teachers, all of our social studies teachers, all of our science teachers, all four core will be together to plan at least once a week, and that's something that is new, something that our elementary schools have done for a long time, but has not been the case at the secondary level. And so, we're very excited about people putting their heads together on a weekly basis to do those, to make even more outstanding lessons for our kids. The second piece is consistency. We really talked about how we want our kids to go from classroom to classroom, but not experience just completely different kinds of expectations. So we have what we call the Big Five. There's strategies that all of our teachers have agreed to implement. It has a lot to do with, again, setting those expectations with our students and making sure that that's consistent from one classroom to the next, and that that helps us all when we do that. And then finally, again, that literacy piece is something that we all own. And so, our PD, our expectations this year, all of that has been really riding around AVID and how that supports the areas of literacy. So we still like to talk a lot about that this is a place where we all belong, and I do feel that as a team there, that a CA team, we talk about our uniforms as one way that we show that, we are part of a team, just like the Vikings last night in their purple jerseys. We wear our blue polos, and we are a team. So, and, so again, I think a good start for us.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly at the high school. We had a really good start to the beginning of the school year. We are really excited to have the start of offering Anoka Ramsey Community College credits at the high school this year. Again, thank you for your support with implementing that program, with students having the opportunity over their four-year career at the high school to receive Associate of Arts degree from Anoka Ramsey, with collaboration with our Advanced Placement courses. We are also excited that we've implemented the theater program at the high school, which will then allow us to be vertically aligned with the Columbia Academy's theater program as well. We continue to work on our AVID strategies at the high school. This year, we are in a phase, a year-two of a three-year program of working on our critical reading strategies at the high school. And we have also, at this year, we celebrated our students' 16 Advanced Placement Scholars this year at the high school. Some other things that are happening at the high school is we continue to focus on our culture and climate of our real expectations. We have the growth mindset of focusing on academic rigor, that, you know, colleges is, high school is not a goal, that's an expectation. And we tell our students that at the end of your high school career, we want to know what colleges you are, have been accepted to, and which one you are picking. So at the high school, we just, we like to say that the diploma is a continuation, that your real diploma is your four-year degree. And we also are continuing with our homework center programming after school, focusing on literacy. We are also excited at the high school to, we've met today with implementing the 21st Century Grant and working with some nonprofit organizations at the high school. I believe Director Stunkel has presented earlier to the board about that. So at the high school, we're really excited about that opportunity for our students. And we are also excited next week to have ninth through 11th graders receive their Chromebooks this year, which will be new for us. And then, our continued, as you heard Principal DeWitt talk about college and career-ready focus, we continue to have that vertically aligned throughout the district, which is exciting to see the end results at the high school. The other thing that we have implemented at the high school is we're having called Highlander Time, which will start October 10th, which is an opportunity for students to work with their teachers at the beginning of the day and also have PLC time for our teachers as well. Next up at the high school, we will have our first parent and new student parent meeting on September 20th at 6:00 PM in the PAC. And lastly, I know that I've talked to some of the board members at the football games, and I have missed some of you. I know some of you have, know that we keep it real at the high school. And I know that there was a request from at least one of the board members that they have not received their wristband, so I'm just going to hand them off to you all, so that as you come to board meetings or to games or schools, to always remember to keep it real.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions directed at the principals?
I wanted to comment that the online sign-up, that came in an email from the academy for all the technology agreements, that was really great, and I was able to do that right at the open house, saving a lot of paper, a lot of time. I thought that was a really great addition. I didn't make it to the elementary school open houses. Did you guys do those also? That was great, yeah.
We agree.
Yes.
Anyone? Just a quick question on the full-day programs. I know that initially, there was, you know, conversations about how they thought the kids would do with that kind of a program. Does that seem, and obviously, we're still doing it, so it seems to be working out okay?
Yes, and I'll speak, and then if the principals would like to say anything. We have targeted our full day for students that live in the boundaries of Valley View or Highland and qualify for free and reduced lunch. And what we found in looking at the data last year was that the students that were in the full-day program had lower scores on their assessments and made great strides during the year. So we found that it was exactly the students that we thought needed that extra boost, that were enrolled and that made great strides. So we're very pleased to be able to expand that to Highland as well.
Excellent.
Are you seeing any comments from the kindergarten teachers about their readiness for kindergarten, like as they come in day one in kindergarten? I know that's chaotic in general, but...
Right. So, I just looked at the data that DISA provided a couple of days ago for last year's kindergarten assessments, and it was very interesting to see the students that were in our pre-K four program and how they scored in their kindergarten assessments in contrast to those who were not. And there was a marked improvement for those that were in our pre-K four program. And we have not yet completed, if I'm correct, the kindergarten assessments, or we're in the process of that, and we're very eager then to be able to compare that data as well, and then even to be able to separate it out for those students that were in the full day. So we're looking forward to that data.
And then, on the social-emotional side, those students that have been in pre-K are, they're hitting the ground running, and they're not having those first-day jitters like some of the ones that are new to school. So I know that we see a marked difference in those students as far as the climate of the classroom goes.
Right, I would agree. The kindergarten teachers really appreciate the overall readiness, so again, the social-emotional side, the students' ability to have stamina throughout the day. That was one, I believe, one of the questions you asked first was, the pre-K teachers are very skilled in doing small, or short activities and varying it throughout the day. So a lot of movement, a lot of short activities that carry them through the school day with good breaks, with going to lunch and specialists and having some time outside.
And I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank the principals and the staff of the elementaries that have so welcomed the pre-K four program and are providing so much support for our four-year-olds. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? All right, you survived your first week and a half. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Next up would be the food service update. Bill, you're up for this one.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Just a quick update with our food service and what's going on with our food service. As you know, a couple of years ago, we have contracted with Sedexo Food Service to manage our program. And tonight, I'd like to introduce, this is Sierra McDonald. She is our, she's our new food service manager from Sedexo for this coming year, and we hope she stays for a long time. Again, we are here to create a world of opportunity for every learner at Columbia Heights Public Public. And when we look at our core values, you know, most of these kind of touch our children as we talk about our food service and as we feed them breakfast and lunch on a daily basis. One of our main purposes, there's really two main purposes that we'll touch on tonight when we look at bringing Sedexo in. Number one was the quality of the food that we were serving, and number two was the budget and to make sure that we were not overspending, which was happening before the day came in. So just going to give you some quick pictures, kind of focusing on some of our more healthy choices. And I think what I want to do is give, Sierra just a chance to talk about menus and what we're going to kind of push this year when it comes to food.
Thank you for having me. Chairman Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, we haven't met yet, but it's nice to meet you. Thank you for having me. I am new to Sedexo as well as Columbia Heights, so I am learning two different systems. So it's been a fun week, because they all crashed and burned on us, but we made it work. I appreciate all of the principals and the staff who've helped us get those, especially our little kiddos, through the lines as quickly as possible. And I know we're problem-solving some of those PIN issues that we're working on. We are working with Kristen. We have some farm-to-school benefits we're bringing in. We want to bring some more products from the community, and we have fresh foods for those kids, so they're right from Minnesota, homegrown, just like the rest of us. We're working on new cultural menus. We're trying to get a rotating menu, so the kids can kind of expect it's Friday on the third week, we're having pizza. Gets them used to it. I know I have four kids of my own. They like to have consistency, and it makes it go smoother and faster, also makes ordering easier. I come from a food service manager at Target. We work a lot on reducing waste. So we're already working with all of our staff on how to make sure that we kind of eliminate ordering too much of one thing, but making sure we have enough food for all of the students to get what they do need. And we're working on new production menus, so that way, we can keep records of those and make sure we're ordering the right things for the right amount of kids that we have as the new ones come in. And then, we're updating all of our PCS systems, so that way, we can make sure we have proper accounting and that the right kids are getting accounted for on each menu. So we've added their pictures, so that we know when they put their numbers in, it is them, and that we are accounting for the right people, so they're not coming out of the wrong student's accounts.
Thank you. Then next, I just want to touch on some of the results that we have. We talked about our budget. That's pretty much what I'm dealing with all the time, is the money piece. But you can see, since they've taken over, our fund balance has increased, whereas before this, for about a five-year period, we were slowly, just kept falling and falling and falling. So very excited about this. This will give us some chance, actually have some more fund balance to fall back on. We can look at some of our equipment pieces and need, at this point now, we can buy what we need, and we don't have to really worry about it as much. We really can look at what we want to serve and how we want to serve it, and we'll be able to get the equipment that we need. So this is very, very good news. I guess, is there any questions?
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
I know I judge how you guys are doing by what my daughter says about lunch, and she came home yesterday and said it was very good, so it's impressive.
Is she at the high school?
She's at the high school, yeah.
Oh, sounds very good. Yeah, and I have an Army background, so I'm pretty hearty. I don't plan on going anywhere for a while.
Welcome to Columbia Heights.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, the 2018 preliminary levy.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Okay, tonight, we get to start talking about, actually, the 2018-19 school year when we talk about our levy. I apologize that we had to turn out, so actually, some information to you this evening. This information is very new, very fresh. We actually had a meeting today at MDE to go over this. And they have a couple of issues which we'll talk about, and we'll have some updated numbers very shortly, but this will give you a pretty good idea what will be happening with our levy for the paid 2018 levy. Again, we're here to create a world of opportunity for every learner, and when we really talk about our core values, again, when we talk about our budgets, we talk about how we are putting programming together for our students, we really are touching on every piece of our core value, which is very nice. Now, this gets kind of busy up here, and that's why you have a handout. So when we get to that part, I'll let you know. You can see the numbers a little easier. But just to give you some background, you can see what's been happening with our enrollment. We have, we have, we were having some pretty good upticks on a yearly basis in enrollment, but now, the last couple of years, that hasn't happened. You see that in 2016, we talked about this last year when we finished out the year, this is the first year we actually had a negative or a decrease in our total overall enrollment. This year, we're up a tiny bit, but, you know, haven't recovered from where we were back in 15. And going forward, we don't expect any new students, and when we're looking at some of our new numbers coming out of our elementaries, that's certainly what it's proving. We're seeing some lower numbers in elementary. We're seeing some, actually, some decent numbers in our middle school and our high school, but that's kind of a bubble that's coming up through, so that, you know, another three, four years, it'll be kind of going out. But I like to show this to you because, of course, our students, however we get paid, all our enrollment's tied to an enrollment number. A little background, at least a little history here on our net tax capacity. Back in 2012, you saw we were really kind of shrinking when we looked at Columbia Heights right after the recession hit. We were shrinking back in nine, 10, 11, you can see 12, we really had a pretty big shrinkage again. But now, it's starting to come back. So you can see that this past year, actually, it is one year behind. We don't have the 17 numbers yet, but when you look at 16, we're up about 8% when we look at the values of our property in Columbia Heights. When we look at sales ratio, this says a lot, too. Our sales ratio is what does a house actually sell for compared to what the county has it appraised at? So as we sell a house, the appraised value is right now at 92.7%. So our houses are selling higher again than the appraised values. We look back in 2012, it wasn't that way. It was like, it was pretty much right on, or it actually flipped over the other way. But the reason the sales ratio is important is because the county or the state of Minnesota looks at that and says, well, your house is really worth more, so we should really get a little more tax for it. Okay? So we take the net tax capacity, we divide it by the sales ratio, which increases the adjusted net tax capacity. You can see now that that's 23 million, up about 7% over last year. Okay, let's quickly go through some of the early numbers. Equity revenue, you can see that's up about $119,000. I want you to have the other sheet handy as we go through some of these numbers, because I added a column on your sheet that talks about a change in overall revenue. So anything that has an aid component, I've added to that column, so you get an idea of overall what's happening, not just what's happening in the levy. But equity, what that looks at is, when we look at our operating levy, ours is at $608. Well, the max that other district could have is at, you know, $1,900. So what we look at is, compared to other districts in our operating levy, where do we sit? And because we're lower than other districts, we're able to levy a little more money to give us a little bit of an edge back up like the other districts. I mean, we certainly aren't up at $1,900, but it does help a little bit. You can see that for 2018, that levy will be at $552,000. And overall, that is an increase from where we were, if you look at the sheet, up about $27,000 overall. So what you see, we have an increase of $119,000 in our levy, but the aid, of course, is going up much less. So we're going to get $27,000 new, but we're levying $119. We're actually getting $80,000 less in aid. Okay? That make sense? When we look at our location revenue, remember, a few years back, the operating levies were kind of split into pieces. And the state recognized that, yes, we aren't giving you enough revenue, so the location revenue was a, was a amount of levy that every school could do, even if they didn't have a levy, and they took ours and cut it into pieces. Okay? Again, so you see there, we have an increase of $260,000, but overall, going into that year, we actually have a decrease of $6,500. So even though we're seeing an increase in our levy, there's really no new money that's going to come into the budget in this category. Then we look at our actual referendum. Again, you see a relatively large increase there again. And when you look at the sheet in front of you, you actually see that's actually going down, $122,000. So again, that's a shift, it's the equalizing factors that the state plays with, so we'll be getting much less aid, and we will be levying some more money just to try to remain the same. These are the three big pieces where you can see some... These are the three big pieces where you can see some increases for this year. The student achievement levy, that's been phased out, so you see that is zero going into 2018. And then abatement is about the same. If you remember what abatement, what that really is, is at the county level, when somebody doesn't pay their tax, not doesn't pay, when someone decides that or thinks that their house is not as valued as high as the county says it is, they go in, they have a hearing, and the county usually lets them lower their taxes. So you can see that we were short, you know, $38,000, but what happens is the state turns around and lets us levy, so we remain whole in the dollars that we receive. That's what abatement's about. So in the general area, it's about a little over $500,000 increase in our levy for 2018. We look at our designated dollars. Now, this is integration. This is a grant. Runs about the same. You see a small, small increase. That's based on how many minority students we have in the district. Reemployment, you see that's up a little bit. Part of that's due to our cuts, and we had to lay some people off. So you can see that that's up a little bit. Our safe schools levy, that's how we pay for our officers in our buildings. And then the same thing happens with District 916. They can have a safe schools levy, but it's levied through the district, so our portion there is at $53,000. And then our vocational, up a little bit. One reason we're seeing a little bump there is actually one of our teachers was gone for quite a while, a year before, so we're kind of getting back to where we were. We're going to levy to what they actually work. So a small increase in our designated area, about $33,000. Look at our operating capital. Here, operating capital bounces around a little bit all the time, too. There's a formula. It looks at the age of our buildings, along with how many students we have. You see that we have a little less in that levy, down about $11,000, but if you look on your handout, you see that overall, we actually have almost $6,000 in new money overall. So a little bit back. Our facility bond adjustment, if you remember back in 2011, when we did the facade and did the driveway in front of the middle school, we sold capital facility bonds. And what happens is, to make those payments, that comes out of our capital dollar, so we see a negative, our payments about, you know, a little over $80,000. It comes off of Fund I, and then it gets shifted over to Fund VII to actually make the payment. And we'll see that in a minute, you'll see it in Fund VII. Health and safety, this is one area. This is being phased out. You see that we have a negative adjustment there of $115,000. We're still working with MDE. We feel that this number isn't correct. It should be closer to zero. But that'll be coming forward here in the next few weeks. They haven't even run their second run yet. We've only been working with their very preliminary numbers. It sounds like tomorrow around noon, we'll actually see the second run of the levy. So we'll see a lot of changes over the next six weeks. Long-term facility maintenance, this is the last year we'll actually see a bump to increase how much money we have available for our maintenance of our buildings. So you can see that is an increase of $211,000. And you can see that overall, we are going to receive $273,000 more, so we get another, you know, $60,000 in aid. This will be the last increase in that program. It'll just remain the same going forward. Our lease levy is broke up in different pieces. You see that our lease levy is at $753,000. The lease levy for District 916 is at $181, and then we have a small lease levy with ties at $7,800. That remains pretty close to the same each year. So in our general fund, at this point, you can see we have an increase there, overall of $676,000. Okay, move on to community ed. Our community ed is based on the census back in 2010, so you can see that the basic levy, the youth levy and after-school levy is all the same, because it's based on those numbers. Early childhood, we're seeing a small increase there. Home visits, about the same, because it's the same, I mean, it's so many dollars per students from birth to three. And then school-age care, we had a large negative adjustment there last year, so you see that coming back on at $60,000. So you see, overall, we have a $63,000 increase in our community ed levy. That increase should not happen again the next year. It should just, we should be staying around that $325,000. And then we've got our capital projects levy. We do have an increase there. It's based on our students. And as we saw, our students slowly increasing, we're seeing a little increase there, a little bump in that capital projects levy. And then here in debt service, the $2,126, of course, that is our bond payments that we make on a yearly basis. We levy what we need. We actually levy 105% of what we need. That way, if someone doesn't pay their taxes, we have enough money to make the payments. And then anything that's left over is actually given away back to our community the next year. And then here's where you see the capital facility bond payment there of $85,000. That comes out of Fund VII. And then again, we have some abatement in Fund VII. So that's kind of a quick overview of what's happening. Like I said, we're going to see some of these numbers change. I don't know if we're gonna, if the actual dollar amounts are going to be this big when we get to the end of it. As I talked today, there's going to be several small adjustments when we talk about the dollars in our levies, all the school district levies, over the next few weeks. Of course, our enrollment gets firmed up, too, so we have a better number to use. And then, so then our budget picture is much more concrete when we get to November. And we will bring this back to you, and actually in November, as a levy to be certified in that first meeting, and well, we only have one meeting in December. So if you're at that meeting, it's about, you know, right away, that first week. And at that, two weeks from now, you'll be asked to pass a board motion for maximum. That way, as the levy kind of bounces around, up and down, we'll be able to levy for whatever's available to us. If we limit it to a dollar today, then we're limiting to that dollar amount. So again, this is what we've done every year, is we ask that you pass a motion for the maximum on the levy. And that'll be two weeks from tonight. Here just gives you an idea of what's happening with our levy over the last few years. We're seeing an increase here this year, but if you look back at 2011, we're actually not any higher than we were back then. So I think it gives you a little bit of perspective of what's happened with that, as we see it kind of bounce around. We worked very hard to try to not get that yo-yo effect, but it tends to happen. We don't have a lot of control with the equalizing factors from the state of Minnesota, and it also hinges on, of course, our enrollment. Any questions?
I do have a question, and I'm sure you've answered this, but it looks like a lot of what's changed here is that we're levying more because we're receiving less aid.
Yeah, especially when you look at the first part of it in the general fund, when we look at our referendum dollars, yes, the equalizing factors are different, so that, yes, in order to get the same amount, we've got to levy more, because we are going to receive less aid.
Is it sort of, as I understand it, it sort of works because we can levy more, the state actually? You know, is that how it works?
Well, I mean, I'm not always in their discussions of how they decide what the equalizing factors are going to be. But it does tend to...
Chicken and the egg.
It tends to, when it gets more difficult for them, they tend to shift a little bit over to us, and then it gets a little better, then it kind of shifts back a little bit for a little while. And that's one reason our levy does this.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Next up is the curriculum cycle and update.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm very pleased to be here this evening with our curriculum coordinator, Tara Tuckrell. We're here this evening to present an informational update, an overview of what's in the forecast for our curriculum review cycle this year. Of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And with our core values, we discussed in planning how we could narrow the focus, but really, when we're looking at comprehensive K-12 curriculum cycle, it includes everything. And so, of course, we always strive to be innovative and excellent. We need the community for input for our curriculum. We know that it's better when we collaborate, and it takes innovation and courage to increase that rigor. And we're always working to respect our students' background knowledge and what they're coming with. So I couldn't narrow it down. Again, this is an annual informational update. The curriculum cycle for 2016 to 2023 was approved in the previous school year. There is no governance question attached to this. However, if there are any significant changes with the curriculum cycle, we will be back for approval. Of course, the curriculum review is part of Minnesota State Statute 120B11, and it's embedded within our strategic plan for the district. So taking a peek at the curriculum cycle and what it looks like, it is a seven-year curriculum cycle, which means every seven years, the department that's listed there starts back at year one with study and preparation, moves through that program design, implementation, and then we spend the next few years reviewing, refining, and sustaining. So it's kind of the process that we follow. And during each of those different stages and phases, Coordinator Tuckrell and the Teaching and Learning Team and the leadership teams meet together to do a comprehensive needs assessment, review the standards and updates, look at innovative best practices, and then plan and implement. We have many assumptions that go with the curriculum cycle. Of course, our tool for online, kind of our online warehouse for where we keep all of our curriculum is called Atlas. All of the new courses that are proposed have to follow the board-approved protocol and process. We don't have a separate curriculum cycle for special education gifted or English learners. All of those areas are embedded within. So if we're looking at social studies curriculum, we're looking at social studies curriculum for all. Social-emotional learning is embedded with all of our curriculum. Of course, college and career readiness, technology integration, the Minnesota Department of Education standards, and some of our content areas don't have Minnesota standards, so we look to the national standards for those areas. The board-approved curriculum is posted, and then we'll show you the process that we use to get input from teachers' community board approval. Reading and math and science are priority areas for us, and my favorite, it always comes in at or under budget.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the board. We wanted to share a little more about Atlas, and Atlas is our curriculum mapping software, and it allows our teachers from early childhood all the way up to grade 12, 12th grade teachers, to map out their curriculum and align it to Minnesota or national standards. It also allows us to look at across-grade levels at horizontal alignment to ensure we have similar programming and curriculum happening between the classrooms. A big tool that we use are the reports that vertically align. So as we look at a student going from fifth grade to sixth grade, we can see how the skills move up and how they align, and the kids are building on what they've learned. So our teachers enjoy that part of it, to really pull those reports and see what's happening. Atlas is also a tool that allows us to share with families. So our goal this year is, we are working with all of our staff, early childhood through 12th grade, during our district in-service days, to collaborate and work on updating our Atlas pieces. So our goal is, by the end of the year, to have pieces public for families to see, so they can see what the course's goals are, what their content is, what standards they match to. So we're really focusing in this school year on our Atlas programming software. Zina mentioned earlier about our curriculum mapping process, and our goal in the process is to get input from as many stakeholders as we can. So we begin with our teachers, and look at the data, and look at the needs, and compare it to the standards. And from there, we take it to our leadership teams. What are we noticing for needs? What do we need to really look into with the standards? And they make recommendations. So working with principals on those leadership teams and teaching and learning, we create recommendations that we bring forth then to the administrative team, as well as to World's Best Workforce. And we're fortunate to have a wonderful World's Best Workforce team, which includes community members, parents, staff, other district staff are on there. And so we bring recommendations and make decisions with them. We make recommendations from them to bring to the superintendent and school board. So our goal at the end is to bring items up to the school board to get approval with it, but really getting input from all the different stakeholders throughout the time. We won't hit on all of these, but wanted to share, what did it look like last year for curriculum? So one of the big pieces last year was our K-5 math adoption. We adopted Math in Focus, which is based on Singapore math, and our teachers have been really happy. As we checked in with them last school year, we walked into classrooms, we've checked in with families during curriculum nights, and they were excited. They said, "We get this. We get the math. We're excited about it." So we've continued to check in with teachers this year and start pulling some of that data from the math. Our K-1 literacy pilot is going through that process last school year, where we looked at the needs and really determined what are some programs that are out there to help our students, and piloted two different programs. And Zina will give an update on that on the next slide. And then looking at our inclusive curriculum, we purchased books for our elementary schools to supplement their literacy curriculum, and then focused in on our American Indian Curriculum K-12 as well. What are some lessons and resources that we can implement into all of our classrooms? As mentioned earlier from Principal Robleski, we're excited about the performing arts during the school day, and so we spent last school year taking site visits, looking at different programs, and see what are some programs that are out there that we could bring in to Columbia Heights. And our last one that's up there is a water safety program. We worked with the American Red Cross and our middle school physical education teachers to update our water safety program that they have in the middle school PE classes that they come to the high school and take.
Some of the highlights that we're working on in terms of curriculum development this year is, of course, the implementation of our new kindergarten and first-grade literacy curriculum. The Teaching and Learning Team has been out in all of the buildings this year already in the Week 1 and Week 2, and so far, we're off to a great start. Press is Path to Reading Excellence in School Sites. We're going to be starting a pilot in October. Teachers will be getting trained. What this is, is class-wide interventions. So we found out of the studies from the University of Minnesota, this is a program through the University of Minnesota, that these brief class-wide interventions are actually showing gains for kids at all grade levels, and all ability levels and all skill levels. So kids who are accelerated are accelerating even more, kids in the middle are accelerating, and kids who need that additional support are also moving forward. So we're looking at taking that approach as a pilot. Our Career and Tech Ed, CTE, and Engineering, we're aligning K-12 with a strong focus on 612 this year. Our social-emotional state standards, so the Minnesota Department of Education has released a draft of some new guidelines for ensuring that we're embedding social-emotional learning and supports for all of our students K-12. So that's in draft form right now from the Department of Education, so we're working on implementing that. And our science team is in that study and preparation phase on the curriculum cycle. They've been in a little bit of, in that phase for the last couple of years, as the Department of Education is about to release the new standards, and then they don't, and they put them on hold, and then they're about to release them. So it's actually been okay, because the team has really worked with the K-12 science team, and they've become stronger and better and gone more in-depth, so it's okay. So if there are any questions about the curriculum cycle...
Hello?
Actually, excuse me, I have one. We're going to have social-emotional standards from the state. What is that going to look like?
So it's part of the 2014 Safe Schools Law that was enacted. So it looks like a framework. So for example, in our elementary schools, a lot of the examples that are given by the state are already covered through responsive classroom. That is a system and a framework that we already have present that tends to the social-emotional needs of the students. So the draft framework that I've seen kind of lists the grade and then some suggestions of how we might accomplish and support students in that social-emotional learning. So it's different activities that teachers can do in their classrooms with students. It's not been formally officially released, but we got a heads-up in June at a training, and so we're looking at that, and we'll be rolling it out when it's formally released.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing what exactly that's going to look like.
You know, it's part of the CASL, and I wish I could remember what CASL stands for. Maybe Tara can help me. It's part of the CASL framework, which is a national network for supporting students with social-emotional needs. There's five standards, or five key areas that CASL follows. So it's not a lot of new, it just is providing a framework and guidance to schools for social-emotional learning.
I just had one other question, if that's okay. When you talked about the science study and preparation... When you talked about the science study and preparation, not having direction on the curriculum, do you think that's kind of impacting the MCA scores or is it not changing anything? Are they in limbo, and is that part of what's going on, maybe?
With some of our science scores, we've seen increases. We were able to conduct, what the team took time to do together, K-12, really, yeah, K-12, is we have this massive spreadsheet that shows all of the standards for all of the grades in science, who's teaching what where, when are we taking it to mastery, when are we introducing it, and with that, what are we assessing specifically? And with that spreadsheet, we've been able to develop a needs assessment. So, even though the standards aren't, the new standards are not released yet, we're not holding back with, if there's a, if there's a need with science. In fact, this week Tara was in, at CA, at the Columbia Academy in all of the science classrooms observing and supporting. We've got some new science teachers down there, and our assessment coordinator, Desa Faebek, is a science teacher by trade, and so she'll be supporting that PLC throughout the school year. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Exciting. Thank you.
We are going to move on to our action items, and the first one up is Constitution Week Resolution. Zina.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, on September seventeen in seventeen-eighty-seven, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia signed the United States Constitution. For two-hundred-and-thirty years, this document has guided us, instilled hope, and has provided checks and balances within our government. This historic document sets our nation apart, not only because of its enduring nature, but because it begins with the three remarkable words, "We the people." In previous years, across our district, teachers have created engaging lessons and activities to promote the Constitution as our nation celebrates this historic event. Student activities include reading and analyzing authentic documents. They link the original documents that led up to the birth of our nation to modern-day documents and modern-day ongoings in the government, comparing the United States Constitution with that of other countries. Students write about what freedom means to them. And then this year, we're, especially at the high school, we're honing in with the new civics test that's part of the new Minnesota State statute. So, last spring, we began working with that team, and they've already got it up and running and on Google and ready to go. So, we've worked quite closely with them. So, this evening, I'm here to ask you to adopt a resolution stating that Columbia Heights' Public Schools will celebrate Constitution Week, September seventeen through September twenty-third, 2017.
Okay, we'll start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura.
Second.
Natty? I'll read it and then if there's any discussion. Resolution approving September seventeen through the twenty-third, 2017, Constitution Week. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States. And whereas, it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, and defend all, against all enemies. Whereas September seventeenth, 2017, marks the two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And whereas, the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated during the Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2017, as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America, in accordance with Public Law 915. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Columbia Heights Independent School District Number Thirteen will hereby celebrate the week of September seventeen through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Comments, questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution, Natty. Sophie, would you roll call vote, please?
Palmer.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Asamurai.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Zina. And next up is the National School Boards Association Annual Conference. And the background on this is per policy 214, out-of-state travel by school board members. We are asking for prior approval up to two school board members to attend National School Board Association Annual Conference in San Antonio in April 2018. The expenditures are already reflected in the current school board budget. And currently this year, in the rotation for the conference for 2018, Member Palmer and myself are up for the rotation. So, as that moves through, we'll reach out further. Start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly.
Second.
Lauren. Discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
Questions, what?
And number one, I guess I would ask is how much are we budgeting for this?
We budget enough for two members to go.
Two members. On the approximate, it always seems like a good idea to let people know what it costs.
Rule of thumb is between, it depends upon what flights and how early we can register. We usually do the early bird registration. Rule of thumb, I always figure like twenty-five-hundred dollars or to three, depending upon just how quickly we get the job done.
All right. Okay.
Anything else? Okay.
Just keeping that on record.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. That is it for action items. We have a couple board topic items. One was from our last listening session. We had a resident come in to ask some questions, and the questions were related to matters of personnel. So, as far as details, we won't be expressing those, but the questions have been passed on to administration. And then the other one that we have here is apparently one of our school board members just recently received their leadership certificate, and we would like to take a moment to recognize that. You want to talk about what you had to do to get there? Or do you want me to read it?
You can read it.
Okay.
I'm not-
You're going to get a picture.
Phase three, finished phase?
You got, you, and you get to do one and two first, though, so, yeah.
I did that.
So, Leadership Development Certificate was presented to Natty Severson. It's presented upon completion of Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Workshops Series Phase One, Two, and Three. So, if you want to come on up, we'll get Casey to get his camera out if he's got it over there.
We get to line up again and shake our hands.
Yes.
Yes.
Just two little X's. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
(applause)
Took me three years. I just, all the phase ones, the meeting break, was all those times when I couldn't go.
You're so good.
No, or it was in international halls.
When I paged through there, I'm like, "It's totally me."
Anybody else have anything else for board topics that they'd like to bring up?
I actually forgot. I actually went to the, the welcome back.
Convocation.
The convocation. Well, I flew out right, I mean, we went on vacation like that afternoon, so I completely forgot. It seemed like it was like six months ago. And it is a great time, and it is a lot of fun to see, I mean, out there, having a good time. So, it was, it's a lot of fun.
I'd like to think that Superintendent Kelly is just like normal, everyday life demeanor, that there's a school board meeting, Superintendent Kelly.
Indeed. You can think that.
Anything else for board topics? Okay, hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight-twenty-one.